Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out, joining us tonight. It's great to see a good crowd. Uh, we're gonna call this, uh, meeting to order. And it is, uh, March the thirteenth at six P M. We do have a forum. Director Eckenrod, myself, Director Ward, Director Conlin, Director Shaw, Director Gaines, and Director Bartels. All present. Matt Land is not here. Present. Yeah, but this is quite messy.
You're doing good.
Stand up and pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, Lord, we, uh, we thank you for another day, Lord. Lord, we ask that, uh, the decisions that are made here, Lord, that they are of you, Lord, and in your will. Lord, we, uh, thank you for the community and the community that's represented here, Lord. Lord, we just ask that as we leave here, we remain neighbors and friends and be sure to let your light shine through in these difficult times. Lord, we ask that if it is your will to bless us with the much needed rain. Lord, we thank you for all that you do and your continued blessings. In your name I pray. Alright, so on, uh, Agenda Item Number Four.
Wait, wait, wait. Go with that. Nevermind. I thought you said your word, not mine. Okay. Start over. I apologize.
Okay, moving on. Line item number four. Um, Director of Public Commons, do the directors have anything that they want to add? There's no public comments, turn it. I do.
This has nothing to do with water. Um, but a lot of us operate under L- LCs or LLCs. You know, the ranches, the farms, uh, you know, sometimes put equipment and different ones. Um, you know, actually every entity that I've invested in is an LC. There's something called the Corporate Transparency Act. Uh, it's an old CPA. I used to get notices on this. And I thought this had been shouted down for single member, um, or family. It weren't just a family that has a farm or a ranch. It was not. It's, it's gone into effect. It's run by part of the Treasury Department under their Financial Crimes Enforcement Network. And so you talk to your accountant, you have to file a thing this year showing the ownership in the LCs. Failure to do so can be five hundred dollars a day civil penalty, ten thousand fine, imprisonment for two individuals. It's just, it's a garbage overreach from the government again. But I was not aware of it and I keep up with that stuff. And, and I got a notice in, you know, Texas Agriculture that, uh, it's, it, that there is, there was supposed to be an exemption for, you know, for family deals, one, you know, single member. It didn't go through. So for now, we're stuck with this. Talk to your accountant or whatever. Uh, anything in existence prior to this year has this full year to register. New, new entities, you know, have like ninety days and eventually just thirty days for anything after this year. But it's something to be aware of. It's just another damn regulatory burden for farms and ranches. But they, they, you know, they say, oh, we, we wouldn't mess with families. Tell that to the IRS. I mean, this, this would be the same thing. See, and please be, please be aware, LCs have to register. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Gaines. Item Five. Consider impossible action approved within minutes from February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. February meeting.
How much? You did actually do this. How much was that?
Motion made by Director Conlin, seconded by Director Shaw. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Item Six. Consider impossible action, February twenty twenty-four, financial statements.
Month of February, we have a total income of a hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents a year. Five hundred fifty-nine thousand, five hundred forty dollars and forty-one cents. The month of February. Expenses, twelve thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety cents. And for the year, a hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-three cents. Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have one question. We moved some money last year into the science. Equipment monitoring rules.
Yes, sir.
So it shows that we still have a balance of eighty thousand in science. Two hundred and sixty thousand in modern rules. There's been some, uh, citizens that have called and wanted to have more representation at some of the committee meetings. Maybe Dr. Bill, Dr. Jim. So finish together the Director Gaines and maybe have one meeting a quarter where Dr. Bill's here. Because I know that a lot of people have questions.
That'll come up in the Rules Committee reports.
So, but it was brought up that there wasn't money there for that. So I wanted to brush on this. There is money there for that. Okay?
It'll be your next one.
Alright, so we were on motion and second. We got those right? Who made the motion?
You made the motion. I'll second.
Got a motion by Director Gaines, current financial statements, seconded by Director Shaw. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Agenda Item Seven. Review of monthly investment officer report. Did, um, talk to, uh, Texas Bank and on a seven month, four nine. So probably into.
Okay, I'm, I'm good for the animation.
You got it, right? We don't have to take any action. See if I have any questions. Agenda Item Eight. Consider impossible action. Invoices received and invoices paid.
It's a motion, huh?
You have to be in action on that.
Top motion.
Second.
Go ahead.
A motion by Director Gaines to approve, seconded by Director Eckenrod. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Item Number Nine. Review of Palmer drought index and well monitoring sites. Is everybody good on that? Item Ten. Report on website information. Departments report candidates in voting. Sure. You move it. Report on website information requirements for board candidates in voting. At February meeting, board meeting, an individual addressed the board and submitted a written copy. See attached. She requested that this be included on the agenda for the March board meeting. The information on the following page has been on our website since September twenty twenty-three, along with a map of the precincts.
Reading requirements.
She read, but she didn't.
What?
Okay, you want me to read the requirements?
We'll just go by. Different positions. I think that was the question. Who can run for various positions?
You want me to read this page? Edit.
Anyway, the seven, uh, members on the board, uh, four up for election this year, three were up back in twenty-two. Um, I'm not sure who or which ones are up this year. But there, of the seven positions, uh, position one is county at large, just anybody, anywhere. Position two is the city at large, so any, anyone within the city, um, position two. Position three, um, uh, is within the fourth park mud. So anyone that lives within the fourth park mud can run for position three. The, the remaining, um, four positions are by rural precinct. Um, so the requirement is that you're a registered voter in the precinct, one, two, three, or four, and that you reside in a rural portion of the precinct. So theoretically, I guess the, the, the individual's question was, uh, I'm, I live, I think I live in precinct four, uh, but I can't run for precinct four because I don't reside in the rural part of the precinct. And that would be correct according to the rules. Questions? Yes, sir.
Charlie, what's the definition of rural?
Outside, outside city limits. Oh, yes. I mean.
I don't know. You know, you look, I don't know whose definition is applied to that particular statute because the whole county's rural if you don't have a certain population.
No, I think it has to do with.
The whole county's rural.
Well, true, but, but city limits. I mean, it's, it's an incorporated city irrespective of the size. And so you have to live outside the, the city limits in that precinct. Just, just the way I, just the way I read it.
Well, yeah. I don't know. The way you read it is how the law is interpreted regarding rural is. Because whose definition of rural applies? If you use one definition of rural, rural's the whole county. If you use what you're saying.
I don't think that's a reason, I don't think that's a reasonable interpretation.
Well, it's. I'm not using all this line, but I'm just saying.
No, no, start thinking like a lawyer.
Well, you got to these days.
You've got position one, uh, I mean, position two where, you know, you have, you have to be in the city. It's important to find that. But rural means outside the city.
Alright, I'll find out.
Alright, if you want to contest it, find, yes, ma'am.
There's been questions before in the past, and we have legal opinions from the legislator that helped write the enabling legislation for our district and attorney's opinions, and they said exactly what you did. It has to be outside of any of those categories that we mentioned, the city.
I, I think that's the way it will come down.
Actually, it didn't even have one legislature.
It's in the legislation from my mom to me.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Earlier, Director Ward mentioned that, uh, an individual asked that there be more information on elections and directors be posted to the website. And I do believe Janelle updated the website with more information. And I sent it to Janelle and thank you again, Janelle, for updating it. But some of that information was not there in September, so I just wanted to make corrections what Director Ward said. There was no information added.
Everything's up there.
And it's on there now.
I think September of twenty twenty-three.
So thank you to the individual who stood up and answered that it had it also.
That was not added. It's been issued since September.
Wes, Wes, I can't hear you. Wes? What, if you're gonna, if you, I'd be interested in what you have to say.
No, you're not interested in all.
No, if you're leaving, that, that shows that you're not interested in giving us what your opinion is. It helps nothing to say something and walk out where people can't hear you. Goodbye, Wes. I'm done. Anybody other question?
He said it's been on the rules since September of twenty twenty-three.
It hasn't been on the website. Yes and no.
I think he knows that further than that.
Because I think Janelle.
Absolutely, that's how.
So thank you, thank the individual who stood up and answered that it had it.
Yeah, no, I mean, these, these, these rules are not new. I think they've been there, you know, from the get-go.
But on the website, the comment was that it was not, it was posted on website since September. Not all of the information that's on there now.
But all this, all this is from the legislation that created, was contained within the legislation that created the district. And then when we also fell into, uh, uh, special law districts, the same information is contained in it.
Would anybody like a copy of this? You'll have a copy of it or not? You all like the copy of it?
Is it the enabling legislation or what's on the website?
It just basically has a reference to the House bill that approved it, the date that it was approved. And come, it was confirmed by a majority vote in Kenny County.
May I have a conference?
Or we can make one after the meeting, just give them a copy.
Thank you.
No problem.
Welcome to mine. I'm sorry, I've been so much. She's on top of it.
Thank you, Ms. Conlin. Any other questions? Alright, moving on to item eleven. The Rules Committee report. Director Gaines.
Uh, we've had, uh, two meetings since the last, um, monthly meeting. You know, my opinion is that, is it, it's moving along nicely, it's moving along a little slower than I would have liked, but that's not bad. It just means that we're taking time to, um, you know, to hopefully get this right. I think where the committee is now, there's a, you know, general consensus, uh, of, uh, doing something. But we're now into the details of what to do. Obviously, there are many, um, opinions. We've had several proposals put forward. The, the Rules Committee will not, uh, because of, you know, Easter, uh, spring breaks, uh, different schedules, uh, we're not gonna be able to meet again until, actually, the day after our next monthly meeting. Uh, Dr. Bill and Jim, um, uh, our engineer will both be at, uh, the monthly meeting in, um, um, in April. And they will be at the Rules Committee meeting the next night, which is, you know, Thursday night. I assume this meeting will be at six, uh, the Thursday night meeting at five o'clock. Um, you know, the, um, I have the dates in front of me, but it's. Eleventh, I think it is. What, eleventh? Yeah, eleventh and twelfth, Wednesday and Thursday of next month. Um, as, as you can imagine, it. Tenth and eleventh, I'm sorry. Tenth and eleventh, okay. Tenth and eleventh, Wednesday, Thursday. Um, you know, as you can imagine, um, you know, the motions run high whenever, you know, tonight, you know, talking about water. But I truly believe that the committee is, um, is, um, focused on coming together on, 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 uh, a plan. There, we may submit more than one to the board. It's up to the board ultimately to do or not do something, um, um, about a, uh, a drought management plan. But I do believe that the committee is making good headway on that. Um. Several things, uh, just as, as an aside, um, you know, some of these are questions that have come up. And then, uh, at, at one of our, our committee meetings, people ask about the photos and pumping reports. That information is available here at the district office. It is, the, the app, I talked to Jim extensively this morning. Um, they're, they're having trouble getting that going because some of the old wells, I think the way I understood him, say the GPS locations are, are not exact. I mean, there's a permit or two that have multiple wells. They've gone out there and the well that was supposed to be north of ninety and south or vice versa. Uh, you know, Marty's, um, continuing to work on that. Uh, you know, Jim got involved in some, you know, technical web hosting information that, you know, went right over my head. I wish I had my twelve-year-old grandson there to interpret for me. Um, anyway, they, they're still working on it, trying to put it on the app, but the information is available here. Um, and, and as soon as they can get all that worked out, it will, it will be put on the app and the, and the website. Um, um, there was a question I've already apologized to the Rules Committee. I made a statement, in my mind, data and model, um, are interchangeable to scientists, apparently, or not. I made the statement that some of Dr. Bill's stuff is based on his model. He said, no, it's based on the data. It's what we're always updating. He has, um, as we approved, I think in November, he has, um, um, contracted or hired, um, a geologist, uh, who is reviewing the, uh, particularly the fault lines and whatnot. I mean, the geology of, of the stuff that's been around for the last twenty years. And, um, and we'll report back on that later in, in the year. But the, the geologist is working on that now. Um, um, also that that might impact, something came up in our meeting as to the, the zones. You know, who's in what zone, what affects what. You know, there's a lot of talk, test, uh, talk about, you know, diet tests and fault lines and whatnot. So what, what Bill's data and this geologist and Jim, you know, working together, gonna try to do is, uh, is update that. But if, if may, um, if, if, again, what they anticipate is over time, as we get more information, better information, better technology. I mean, hell, just think what medicine has done the last twenty years. You know, they have more to work with now, that, for instance, the zones may change slightly. Um, um, and that's important because, you know, we're talking about a drought management plan and having different impacts by, by zone. Um, along the same lines of the, say, the geologist, um, you know, I would request, um, strongly, you know, that, that, there are a lot of questions, hub has a lot of questions, and rightfully so. But don't call our professionals. You know, they don't work, you know, for any of us individually. They work for the district. They're paid by the district. Um, they're, they only have their time to sell. And, uh, it's not in our budget to have them spend time answering questions. They'll both be here next month. They, they come, I don't remember how many times a year. Um, but they will be available for public questions at that time. In between, I would, uh, ask that you respect their, their time. Um, and also since, you know, since we, if they agree, if they want you to pay for their time, that's up to them. I don't think they will. I think they're busy as it is. But, uh, the district doesn't, doesn't pay for it, therefore they, they shouldn't be bothered. Um. Oh, what else came up? Um, at the last meeting, um, I think it was this one, it could have been Rules Committee meeting a couple of times ago. There was something about the Laredo Water Plan and whether it did or did not include something from Kenny County. Um, there was some discussion, yes, it does, no, it doesn't. It was a number of years ago, et cetera. Uh, apparently, as late as September twenty-three, so just six months ago, uh, Kenny County is included in the Laredo Water Plan, the plan on getting water from here. I asked Dr. Bill about that. He said anybody can put anything they want in any city plan. He said, hell, New York City could put Kenny County in there. That doesn't mean it'll happen or they'll get anything. So his, his attitude was let them put what they want. Um, it, it means, it means nothing. Uh, it's more of a, a hope, maybe, from them. But, um, um, you know, it is in there, but, but Bill said, don't worry about it. And I think that's all.
Charlie, that doesn't get into that report just by out of the blue, though. That was put in that report by somebody who thought that that was a possibility. So I'm sure there's people in the room that know how that happened. Not everybody knows how that happened, but it didn't just happen at random. It wasn't a, it wasn't a random Laredo decided they want.
No, my, my understanding is that, is that, you know, is that, that Laredo probably looked at some of the large permits here and, and thought they could buy into it. I don't know.
Maybe, maybe not.
But, but, yeah, I mean, it, you know, they, there may be a basis for putting in there, but Dr. Bill said that, you know, anybody put something in there that they want, San Antonio, Austin, any of them.
But Laredo, uh, the, the chances of the Rio Grande going dry and stuff and, and Hombstadt are very, 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 very slim.
It went dry a few years ago.
Um, but that was.
At the mouth. I mean, I, you know, and, you know, Mexico is still holding water back. Mexico hadn't fulfilled their water obligations. They, you know, they, they haven't for forty years. They started doing some during the Trump years because he, he put sanctions on them for not doing it. Those sanctions were lifted in January of twenty-one, so Mexico's holding water back again. But again, none of that has to do with, with us, uh, now. But, you know, you know, I take Bill at his word that they can put in there if they want, but, but it's, it's not an immediate concern to us. But David, to answer your question, probably put it in there because somebody back, back in town was looking at big permits.
Yeah, and I would just suggest, Charlie, I don't know, it's not too hard to find who wrote that and ask them where the source of what they wrote it. I mean, if you don't need to do that, I could do that, but.
Wait, wait, wait. David's talking.
That's fine. Go ahead. I'm done. Well, I just, in the report, it says that they are talking with folks eight miles north of us town. So they said that they spoke with a group of landowners that were eight miles north of us town. So I'm just, you know, with, I think it's just with, it's important to highlight that with the idea that, yes, the board would have to prove the sale. But I think the concern was there is a group of landowners north of us town who have contacted the city of Laredo to offer some.
I agree.
That's the, that's the.
Yeah, anyway, but, you know, Bill, you know, it's, it's, it's not an immediate problem. So it's, you know, yes, yes, it's there. It shouldn't, it, it shouldn't affect us per Bill. So. Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand there's a new, um, member of the Rules Committee. Will you be adding people occasionally?
At this point in time, I don't think it would, it would be conducive to group cohesiveness. How's that a, for, for your answer? Um, no, uh, in terms of adding people, I think what came up, we looked in, in the district rules and the president, i.e. Matt, uh, can appoint committees and appoint people to committees if he's, if he so chooses. Um, yeah, I would, I would lobby against that at this point because the Rules Committee is so far down the road. But again, it would be up to Matt, uh, if he chose. But again, it would be up to Matt, uh, if he chose to do that.
Because the, uh, I, I'd be, the farmer that is a new member is actually a wrong name farmer, so maybe.
Well, again, this isn't a, this isn't a majority rule thing. I mean, we want, we want different, we want, I mean, if you've watched, if you've watched the, the video of our meetings, I've tried very hard to, you know, to, to, you know, play things down the middle on this. And, um, and we'll continue to do so. So in terms of, you know, add, oh, they're on this side or that side, I mean, it doesn't matter. But again, to answer your question is, is up to Matt. I would lobby against it because, you know, we've, we've done so much already. I don't want somebody on there that's playing catch up. I mean, the people there, I mean, they've been dedicated, they've been showing up. I've been, I've been very flattered that, you know, with, with the, with the input, with the dedication, you know, people from the committee have been going to different meetings of different, um, you know, groundwater districts, uh, you know, DAA or GMAs and all. Um, I'm not even sure of all the, the initials, but people on the committee, they're, they care enough. They're spending a lot of time with it and, and, uh, I, I don't want people playing catch up. Thank you.
Can I pick on you now?
Sir?
Can I pick on you now?
I tell you what, I am ready.
So what kind of timeframe did Dr. Bill give us on geologists?
Did Dr. Bill give you on what?
On the geologists?
He did. Um, simply said that, you know, uh, we approved it in November. They're working on it. Um, you know, timeframe, I think, is this year, um, certainly. I don't know whether that means, you know, May, June. It seemed like I heard that from one of them and I don't recall who it was, whether it's Jim or Bill. Um, in terms of the Rule Committee itself, I'd hoped it had something for the April meeting. That is not going to happen. Um, but again, I mean, we're, we're getting there. Um, you know, Randy said something last time, what's the hurry? There is no hurry other than nothing's been done for years and we're pushing through this quickly. And, um, I, I think we're, we're making good progress.
The only thing that I was concerned about is the layout of the fault lines and the regulation.
But the way I envision this thing happening, one, by the time the Rules Committee gets done, we have, you know, product, I don't know whether we require that public hearings on, on the thing or not. I would guess we would. By the time it comes before the board and we work through that, we may have their, their stuff. But what I would also hope within whatever we may or may not adopt, but what the Rules Committee will recommend is that, um, you know, that as, as data changes, um, you know, you know, maybe, you know, for instance, fault lines or zone one, two, or three, that, that the, uh, you know, that what we come up with can change. Others, you know, we say, all right, then zone one, we'll do this. But the definition of zone one may change depending on a subsequent, and it may happen a year or two from now. I mean, that'd be, that may, you know, more data comes available, then the, the plan we put in place, um, it'd be, for lack of a better phrase, a living plan. It's not set, set in time. It, it's, it's set, but if the zone changes, then the effect on an individual well or person would change also. That, that, that makes sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. I was just worried about liability in the future.
Again, I've talked extensively with, with Greg and, and this attorney that I hired for, for myself. And, um, um, you know, they're on board with that. I mean, it's, in other words, it's not secret. It's, it's, um, public notice. It's out in front of everybody. We've, we've gone through a process. Um, um, it's treating everybody the same or at least the same within, you know, zones or areas. And, um, um, you know, I mean, if it's up to me, I'd cut your wire off completely. It's just, it's because I don't like.
How were those zones set up?
I'm sorry.
How were the zone turned?
That was a question that came up Monday at the, at the meeting and, um, it was, it's all, you know, dating back to all the data that they had and gone over and finally incorporated, you know, this. I mean, they mentioned several names and, um, I haven't been around long enough to know, but they took the, you know, the green information and the, I'm making up names now, that, you know, the brown information, the Smith information and put that together. Um, but, but that is one thing that, that I asked Dr. Bill and Jim to specifically address next month. Because, because I don't know, I don't know the exact answer. But, you know, the brief time I had on the phone with them, um, that, you know, it was based on, on all the, the geology and the pumping reports and the, and the dye tests and this, that, you know, that, that they've had over the years. Okay, but, but, but that, that specific thing is one thing they, they absolutely need to address at the next meeting.
Absolutely.
My next question would be for some of the members of the audience that may have been previous board members. Y'all started the dye test. What year was it? Do you remember?
Oh, five is what I've heard.
There's that question.
Send that report.
Is it on there? And the duration of it? Just twenty-two hundred days is what I read, right? Is that something wrong?
And, but see, that, that's another question that, that came up at our meeting and, um, and that's another one that is going to be, you know, put, put before Bill and Jim. The relation between dye test, dye test and the, you know, the pumping reports when you start this well and it has an effect here and, and why, why or why not the dye thing, you know, made some sense, et cetera.
Well, the other question that I had was, but leaving them out of it, but as a board, would it be in our best interest to go ahead and do another dye test and try and do a dye test every ten to twelve years?
I, I think that's a question for them.
Because you're talking about if we, you know, if we put dye in now, it'll be seven or eight years before you get any results.
But, um, it could go on.
And so.
Some of them do.
You know, some of them.
That one should be extremely long because we're severe drought. It's about my condition now.
I, but I, that's a good question. I think it's something we put, put to them when they're here. Yes, sir.
Another, you know, the, the one issue with dye tests is that it does not tell you where you're not connected to. It does tell you where you're connected to, but there can be places you're still connected to that it doesn't pick up. And the reason is because dye flows downstream, but it doesn't flow upstream, obviously. Pressure does flow upstream. And so in order to really test where you're hydrologically connected to, you need to change the pressure by either pumping on the well or pumping something into it and alter the pressure in the well to see if you get a pressure response somewhere else. That's what Wes did. His pumping test and it helps to show what wells you're hydrologically connected to.
Again, I don't want to get into, you know, the science, you know, because that, that's what we have Dr. Bill and Jim for. Um, but yeah, that's something to be brought up in April because we'll have them here to specifically answer questions like that.
Two thousand seven to two thousand twelve.
Yeah. Some of it wasn't done till two thousand thirteen, two thousand fifteen, you start looking.
Yeah, but we, we didn't get the report and the report was dated December fifteen.
Yeah.
We didn't get it until like sixteen.
Just something to keep in mind, you know, I was just thinking about today and I said, well, if we got rolling on this thing today.
That's true. Yeah, no, we'll, let's, let's ask them.
Should we hope and pray for better conditions and then do it, you know, maybe we get a big rain?
Dump it in.
And then see what.
It's another tool and I'd, I'd be very curious to see if they think it would help.
Does anybody remember a cost?
Yeah. Thank you all. And those of you from the committees that are here, thank you again. Catching, you're catching needs, but I appreciate you putting up with it.
Thank you, Dr. Yang. Moving on to item twelve, discussion possible action scholarship program. You want to read that?
You can.
To the public or not?
It's fine.
All twenty twenty-three graduating seniors are reciting on Kenny County.
Oh, yeah, I thought she had.
Last year, the board approved ten thousand five hundred dollars for scholarships. Only one person submitted a scholarship application and was awarded fifty to fifty. Ten thousand five hundred has been allotted for this year on the following page or the essays. Any questions? Use last year. Uh, you want to use the same ones. So if you have a family member, you know, a young person that needs help with college, you put in an application. We'd really like to give them a scholarship.
A year before we go through.
Correct.
Yeah. Oh, and we had, I've had some people ask about it already.
Good.
Are y'all gonna have one? I said yes.
Everybody was the same questions. But, I mean, it seemed good to me.
How does the groundwater district manage and protect the groundwater resources for the landowners and all other water users? Why do you believe you should be awarded this scholarship? What do we have to have an answer on that?
It's the morning of the change, April twenty-first.
April twenty-first.
And isn't this reviewed by Dr. Hutchinson? Doesn't he review?
We've used, okay, when we get, just get it going.
Good for you. When we get scholarships, then it goes in to, uh, to Bill and to probably. He'll bring it out. For their review.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Multiple, multiple days there, twentieth or the twenty-first for the deadline for the essays?
Twenty-first.
No, no, it's not that. That would fly.
That was last year.
It would be a different one.
Oh, yeah, this is twenty-three, yeah.
About to twenty-three.
Okay, okay, so none said, yes, you know, thank you.
It'll be a little bit lighter.
Yeah.
On the top, then he knows.
Yeah. When looking.
Isn't that needs a motion? Is that correct?
That one needs a motion, yes. So, um, y'all want to keep it the same amount?
Yeah.
Same amount, yeah. It's just, it's a date.
Twenty-six?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Keep it same amount?
Yeah.
And I'll say.
Got a motion by Dr. Shaw to approve the scholarship program and the funding for it and not fund it, second in by. All those in favor? Any opposed? Item thirteen, discussion possible action, transfer of funds to certificate of deposits.
Does it have to be qualified for a jumbo? Hundred, hundred thousand. And say work first, let it get out in this one, probably, out in this one, say, pass, quit that month period now. How much were you thinking? Um, like maybe, uh, a hundred, a few hundred thousand, maybe down for a quit that month period and one for six or seven months, seven month period. And there's no penalty if we got paid, put it out, except one month's interest. That's a, but the way, the way we have it set up and all of those, usually we have it, it'll be like four times a year that that they could essentially carry, you know, the six month, you know, carry it, roll over. And we could pull it out at that time if it needed it.
We've had this discussion before that the tax, the tax pool, I think it's paying over five percent. It is like, it's like the money market and said, will we get our money as we, like, worry about it? That, you know, the, what we talked about was whether, you know, this hasn't put all our heads in one basket. Um, you know, tax, tax pool is not, uh, sure, but it, 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 the only money in there are from governmental agencies within the state. Um, you know, there's no guarantee that the state would step up if something happens, but things have been around forever and ever. And, um, yeah, lots and lots of governmental agencies within the state have, have their money there. Um, looking at the CD rates, uh, you know, you know, some of them are substantially less. Um, you know, the kind of money we're talking about, I mean, talking, you know, two, three, four thousand dollars a month, extra earnings on, on the interest, you know, more scholarships or whatever. Um, um, the, you know, I think we should consider either moving some, some more into the, uh, tax pool, certain, certainly out of the money market. Money market, you know, paying one percent, um, you know. And if we do CDs, it looks like the Valley Bank, you know, maybe do, um, you know, two or three of their seven-month CDs. It's less interest at four, seven, five, but it's still close enough that the tax pool varies with the market. It's been going up. But the Fed has recently said that they probably are not going to raise rates anymore. It may in fact start dropping a little. So I'd say, um, that if we do, you know, two or three jumbos, um, then that way we have, I don't anticipate it, but for some reason we have to cut into, you know, we cut into one and, and not, not the others. But, uh, the Del Rio Bank, that's, that's closer, but the community bank over there, two, two point eight-five or something, two point six. That's, that's, that's not market. But I'd say either, you know, there's some discussion about moving, moving more into tax pool or, uh, certainly when these, um, these two mature, um, at three and a half percent, you know, move them to tax pool or to, um, TXN by, by.
But, but for right, for right now.
Sure, for right now, I take it out of money market, put it in tax pool.
Yeah.
Put it in tax pool. I mean, you know, five and a half, in essence, it's a money market. You know, in, you know, we can't get in it as individuals. You have to be a governmental en- entity to be part of it.
Yes, sir.
Um, but we are, we, you know, the district, I, I say, you know, move some over there if we need it and pull it right back out.
You want to leave SSB alone?
Well, until they mature. And when they mature, then we'll make another decision whether to put it in, you know, TXN, um, or, 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 um, or Del Rio Bank Trust. We may, on the banks, we, we want to look at, you know, how much, what the guarantee is. Are we treated as one entity and therefore subject only to, to the one, two fifty limit? You know, is it, is it black?
No, because with the accounts that we have here, the accounts that we have here at, at, uh, Del Rio Bank and Trust here, we have four accounts here. And even though we got, you know, we entered a CD with them, which I don't think caused the rate that we want to do that. But we are insured two hundred and fifty thousand, but we are also insured by, uh, backed by bonds. And we get something very high, have done it for six months, safe and watch, what, my bonds or whatever they're securing. Thank you, thank you, Eric, you know. Of the power, you know. I would kind of like to go with this, uh, TXN bank for seven months, you know.
Yeah.
I know it's a little last thing.
Why don't you just do part of it and from the new markets, uh, tax pool and part of it, Texas? Do you have a half? Well, you do two hundred to Texas and two fifty to.
Well, well, we've got to keep some of the money market. We have to keep, you know, put it in the checking account. Um, when, when do the CDs mature?
Uh, okay, the one, okay, first, I think, so put on this for, one of them matures in June and the other one matures in July. I've got it written on there.
July, no.
Okay, one of them comes due in January and one of them comes due in June, June, now. I mean, it's first day.
Yeah, we, we leave those alone for now.
Yes.
But, um, given our current operation, how much do you believe is the money market? Fifty thousand, hundred? It would need more than that.
I think, I think, I think probably a hundred. I think, I think, I think probably quarter a hundred because we'll have, it would be the next. I guess we could do, maybe transfer some for tax pool.
I guess I, you know, I guess I'll make the motion to, to. Make the motion to put, you know, transfer out of the money market, put two hundred in tax pool and, uh, two hundred in the, uh, um, TXN for seven-month CD.
That'd be two CDs.
Motion made.
Motion made by Director Gaines for a minute, sir.
Okay, I'll see.
Director Bartez, a minute, sir. And then we'll look at, uh, FSB and G. Does you want?
Oh, yeah.
First, yeah. Oh, all those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Item fourteen, General Manager.
Okay, since the last, uh, board meeting, we've only had two. Try to talk a little bit louder if I'm screaming out there. Since the last, uh, board meeting, we had two applications for, uh, exempt, well, one out on Highway three thirty-four, Camp Woods. The other out on Highway ninety west, kind of at the corner of three double O eight and Highway ninety. The region J meeting was, last region J meeting was held February twenty-second in Curville. The previously canceled contract with consultant WSB, um, as consultant, review the state qualifications for the, uh, new and sub technical consultant to complete the, uh, sixth phase of the, of planning, sixth cycle of planning. Also, uh, authorized with the subdivision, which is up with what the river authority, to enter into a contract for the state, uh, consultant. And then we also had to ratify and confirm amended contract for Pennsyl Water Development Board for sixty-day extension, opposing changing consultants. GMA ten group will not be meeting until April fifteenth. GMA seven will be meeting March twenty-first in Sonora. And they'll, this meeting, usually in the spring, they do this. Part, all are part of twenty-one groundwater districts in GMA seven, so at this meeting. Sometimes it's split into two meetings and sometimes try to do only one. But each groundwater district has to kind of explain or, or show what they've done to comply with their management plan. And pays here. Rather interesting. Takes, you know, takes a little bit of time with that from the district to get involved. And this is in accordance with check thirty-six. Where Marty has been working, working along, uh, doing more things. And we've got the few that we didn't have before, so we can get those, uh, in. We're moving along with that project. Rolling along where you can as far as.
Moving on to item fifteen. Get a rule. Motion made by Director Shaw, seconded by Director Comby, Director Jern. Thank y'all for coming.
Six fifty-five, it's fifty-five.
All in favor?
All in favor. Aye, any opposed?